Close beside the Watchon Mountain stands our school so dear. All our precious years of childhood, we have spent them here. For whatever be our watchword, conquer and prevail. Hail to thee, our alma mater, such place that would all hail. When across the world we wander, this will be our song. Honor, love, and true devotion, all to hear it all. For whatever be our watchword, conquer and prevail. Hail to thee, our alma mater, such place that would all hail.
I'd like to call the order. Tonight's meeting, May 7th. Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barvey?
Here.
Ms. Bauer?
Here.
Mrs. Boroff?
Here.
Ms. Brody?
Here.
Ms. Sarian?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Winkler?
Here.
Dr. Golkowski?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
For our Mr. President, everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we just had our executive session. We went through personnel, HIB, suspension, detention, and our legal status update. Additions and deletions from the agenda are listed. We're going to move over to the superintendent's report. Dr. Mast?
So, with tonight's agenda, we have two very important topics. One is the celebration of our partners in the PTA, as well as an overview of the referendum that we are working on for a September pass.
Thank you, Dr. Mast. Mr. Jones?
So, we have a busy summer. We're going to start work here and turning in these classrooms starting on this Friday. We are almost completely moved out now. A couple more people to move over to our new location. We're also, you know, installing the bleachers at the high school. We're also looking at, we just started our, into a new sound system at the football stadium. So, we just are meeting with some contractors this week, and we are hoping to have something ready to go for the June 20th meeting. So, pretty busy and getting ready for the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. For present announcement, the New Jersey Open Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Scotch Plains Family Board of Education has caused notice to this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 512 Cedar Street, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. Such notice was also provided in written notice forwarded to the Union County Hawk Star Ledger, the Council of Clerk of Scotch Plains, and a Borough Clerk of Fanwood, and the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings as adopted May 9th. I would now like to pass over to our student board reps, one who obviously just came back from a victorious game, and back who has not come back from a softball game, I don't think. Maybe.
So, I just came back from a game. We won 7-3 against GL in extra innings. So, that's why I'm dressed in this. But, um, last week we had Youth Day, and there were 40 girls that came out to support the team, and we spent about like an hour after the game, like spending time with them, playing with them, and just really getting to know them and helping them love softball. Yesterday, we won against Burley, also in extra innings. And going to other sports, boys lacrosse won their quarterfinal round versus Cranford today, 17-1, which is a big score difference in lacrosse. Track played, track ran today, golf played today, and also, girls lacrosse played today.
Right now, we're in the midst of AP testing at the high school, which are the most fun two weeks of the year. In the theater department, the production of Addams Family just got nominated for seven Paper Mill Rising Star Awards, including Best Overall Musical, which means that we get to perform at the Paper Mill Ceremony in June, which is exciting. And tomorrow is the Spring Choir Concert, and it's our last performance of the year. It's at 7:00 PM at the high school.
And then, for stuff for seniors, the senior movie is going to be coming up soon. Yearbook distributions are, I think, June 6th and 7th. Senior prom tickets are on sale, and only during the 7th and 9th through 9th during lunch, and they're each $115. And then, also, senior project, which is, or seniors is the most exciting part of the year, starts in two weeks after AP testing. Oh, yeah.
Lot of good stuff going on. You forgot the most important date, graduation.
Ah, yeah, graduation too, that one.
Because we don't have another meeting before that, so.
There is, that's on the 18th.
Great. Thank you both very much. Okay, we're going to move over into our recognition and instructional updates. So, the first is going to be recognition, first recognition. Dr. Mast?
Yes. So, as we do every year, we're thankful to have the opportunity to recognize our amazing PTA. The partnership between the district and the PTA is invaluable. They put in countless volunteer hours throughout the school year to create fun, memorable events for our students, their families, and our teachers. We would like to recognize and thank our PTA for their dedication to our students and school community. As a token of our appreciation, we will give the PTA Presidents and Council a thank you gift. And Mr. Murray is going to read the PTA members that we're going to recognize, and when you hear your name, please come up.
Brunner PTA President Sharon Dowling is finishing her fourth year as the Brunner PTA President. The incoming PTA President has not yet been announced.
Baseball.
Baseball. Sports. Kohl's PTA President Heidi Bogatz.
Her song has a flow.
She is finishing her first year as the Kohl's PTA President and will continue as the Kohl's PTA President next year. Evergreen PTA President Audra Kaplowitz. Finishing her second year as the Evergreen PTA President, the incoming President has not yet been announced.
Thank you.
McGinn PTA President Susan Pastere. Finishing her second year as the McGinn.
Stay up.
Finishing her second year as the McGinn PTA President, and the incoming PTA President has yet to be announced. Starting to see a theme. School One PTA President Angela Yaz.
Mind your work commitment.
Work commitment, but finishing her first year as PTA President and will continue as School One PTA President next year. Nettingham Middle School PTA President Denise Salameka. Denise is finishing her first year as PTA President and will continue at Nettingham next year. Tarrell Middle School PTA President Elise Hines.
Family president.
Finishing her second year as Tarrell Middle School PTA President, and the incoming President has yet to be announced. Scotch Plains Fanwood High School PTA President Ratna Wright.
She's not here.
Ratna's finishing her second year as PTA President at the high school, and incoming PTA President has yet to be announced. This year, and going to be carrying a lot of flowers out of here, finishing her third year as the Council President and will continue as the PTA Council President next year. PTA Council Corresponding Secretary Sonia Panora. Is sick, finishing her first year and will continue next year as corresponding secretary. And PTA Council Treasurer Diane Kohler. And Diane will be, is finishing her second year, and the incoming PTA President Treasurer, PTA Council Treasurer has yet to be announced.
All votes are happening in the next couple of weeks, and I'll find out.
While you guys are taking a picture, I just want to say, we really don't often get to praise you enough. So, thank you so much to the PTA for the incredible, you know, strength that you bring to all of us.
And we have one more embarrassing moment. So, Syra, can you come up?
What?
Yeah. We're going to embarrass you in your uniform. We just want to thank you for your two years of service in being one of our first school representatives.
The longest-serving school rep.
That's right. That's right. And a mentor to Mac. So, big shoes to fill Mac, right? So, but congratulations. We'll miss you. Good luck in college. I'm sure you'll do well for your name in Scotch Plains and make us proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Syra. When you're on, when you're on school break, Syra, come back and come to board meetings.
You can definitely watch them live stream. I know you will. And thank you to all the PTA.
What else would you do on a Thursday?
That's right. That's right. And thank you, all of those that were able to make it and those that who were not, unfortunately. We do really appreciate everything you do, day in and day out, even the stuff that most people don't see. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any thing they want to share?
I would just echo what Mrs. Boroff said, that we are very fortunate in this community to have a wonderful community, and that's represented in the PTA. And we really appreciate the collaboration and all the work that you do. And I know everyone is, we all feel the same way.
I want to say thank you as well. I have kids at two different schools, and I could set my clock to the emails I get, you know, with the updates on Sundays, and I read them and I appreciate them. And I'm so amazed by the multifaceted things that you plan, you know, from the speakers that you get to come into the schools to, you know, engaging parents in plant sales and pie sales and, you know, the coordinating week of respect and all of that. So, it's just, there's so much, and I just want to say thank you to all of you.
So, with that, for those that don't wish to stay, please don't feel obligated. But if you wish to stay, please do. We're going to move over to our next instructional update, which is the Building a Future Ready SPF. So, I think we're going to be getting up, and Mr. Jones, you're going to be coordinating the presentation.
I think we have to move so you guys can get out. Clothing drive at Nettingham on Saturday, starting at 9:00.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone for coming. We'll go over our referendum, and I just want to introduce first who's going to be presenting tonight and our architect in front of us here, Brett Somjen. So, I just want to say, we went through an extremely lengthy process to search for an architect. It was multiple late-night meetings, different follow-ups, different informal meetings at different conferences, and we were proud to select Brett Somjen Architects to help us with this journey. And they're going to be here tonight to help us present. Right here, Greg, to my left, Greg Somjen, Brett Somjen Architects. And Rachel Tiedemann, his associate, is going to be working with, who's been digitally working with us and meeting with us weekly on all the updates we'll be talking about tonight. With that, I will kick off the meeting with Dr. Mast to kick off the presentation.
So, we are at an exciting point that will determine the future of SPF. This will be the first of many presentations to educate the community about the September 17th vote. Community feedback last fall was critical in helping us shape the referendum projects that we will learn more about this evening. And back to Mr. Jones.
So, enrollment. See here, Charles, we did a demographic study November of 2022 where we really identified the potential for increased enrollment. Multiple reasons, really, you know, through, you know, our birth rate was significantly up. Starting in 2016, births were up significantly from historical levels. In addition, of course, we had some housing developments going in that were also affecting. In addition, these numbers here, see in this chart, we actually got a, we asked our demographer to update the numbers based on our enrollment and how it's happened. We've had a significant amount of housing turnover, and really, most of our growth from enrollment is from that housing turnover, not from developments. And so, we do have updated numbers actually coming in higher than that that we'll be updating on our website after we scrub a little bit more, a couple more reviews of the data. So, to summarize, we're up, you know, 150 students this year from last year, fairly significant. And the prior, the demographer reported, is expected that we'll go up 360. We have done significant amount of research, and we look for temporary solutions, like using trailers or additional classrooms at middle schools or partition split. In some cases, we have, we have done that. We've also, we're also moving out of here. So, I know we've talked about multiple times. We're moving out of the central, out of Evergreen to create space. We're moving to 313 South Ave, and we're going to create eight additional educational spaces here. And additionally, on the agenda tonight, we'll talk about removing additional administrators out of the high school into that space as well. But we know, of course, things that we've looked at are not enough. And with that, I will turn it over to Greg Somjen to walk through our projects.
Good evening. My name is Greg Somjen. I am with Brett Somjen Architects. And as per the earlier introduction, we have been working with the district now for well over a year. And when we started this due diligence, it included many things. It included meeting with administration, both central and at the school level. It included meeting with facilities, team members. At the middle and high schools, we actually met with students as well. We looked at lists that were developed over the years of projects that were being contemplated throughout the district. And ultimately, we established a very long list of projects that the district was going to look at and consider for the purposes of a capital campaign. And the list was very extensive and had to be narrowed down. And the district, through the administration and the board, decided that the projects that I'm going to present tonight are the ones that they wanted to present to the community for a vote. It's not an all-inclusive list of everything that was identified over the course of a year because, as you can see, the investment that is being requested is significant already, and that would have just made the investment even more. Ultimately, there are a couple of different ways, and I just want to kind of give a background for everyone's benefit. When we talk about capital projects, there are a few ways capital projects can be funded. One is through capital, which is an opportunity within your annual budget to put money aside for projects. Another is capital reserve, where if there are savings achieved in your annual operating budget, that money can be put aside into a savings account that can accumulate and be used for capital projects. And then, ultimately, a referendum. And a referendum is an opportunity for the district, with the approval of the community, to borrow money for 10, 15, or 20 years and to be able to borrow that money with the intent of making capital improvements and then pay that off over an extended period of time. It's very similar to anyone that would purchase a home. That's not an investment that one can make in one year. So, a mortgage taken out for 15, 20, or 30 years and paid off over time. There are several benefits to a referendum. One such benefit in this particular case is something I'll refer to as debt service aid. Many of the projects that are on the list for this referendum are going to be subsidized by the state, in some cases upwards of 34%. And what does that mean? Well, that means that the local share that the taxpayers are going to be investing will be less because the state is picking up a portion of it. I do share with all our clients that the state of New Jersey's subsidy have been going on since 2000. And so, US community have subsidized other communities' referendums that receive debt service aid because it's through our tax dollars collectively, the state, that this money is invested. So, here's an opportunity for you to bring some of that back into the community and get the investment made in yours. The other benefit of a referendum, as I already shared, is the opportunity to pay it off over time, 15 or 20 years. On these kinds of loans, the interest rates are still reasonably good, relatively speaking. And obviously, as part of the financial discussion, the district does have bond counsel and financial advisors that would help them through that. And then, another benefit to a referendum is that because the investment is being made over a plus or minus 20-year period, there are people who will benefit from these improvements who may not even be in town yet. But the fact that you're borrowing and paying that off over an extended period of time, when they move in and their children start using the school district, their taxes will reflect a contribution to these improvements rather than making an investment in an annual operating budget that would be incurred in one year. The cost of such projects is very challenging to take care of in one year. Obviously, you know, based on your annual budgets, that money continues to be tight when you talk about all of the expenses and the rising cost of a variety of things. Okay. So, with that said, the projects that we're going to talk about tonight are separated into what I would call two separate categories. And the first, which has been identified as the biggest priority, is the growth in population and how to accommodate that. That particular category of addressing the population growth is reflected in one of three questions that will be presented to the community in September. So, question one is a total of $81 million. That includes not just the acquisition of this building that we will refer to, but it includes the additions, the renovations, the professionals that have to be involved, contingencies, and the like. The building that is known as 330 South Ave in Fanwood was formerly a school used by the district, sold quite some time ago, and has since been owned privately and used as a private school. That building happened to come on the market, and so, this is somewhat fortuitous in so much as buildings don't typically come up for sale that are conducive for educational use. And so, as was alluded to by Mr. Jones, the research that we have done, which included trailers and expanding the existing buildings, you know, come with their own share of challenges. You have environmental issues on some of your properties in the form of wetlands or streams. As you all know, parking is a challenge throughout the district, circulation with pickup and drop-off. So, this opportunity, when it came up, was researched extensively and was deemed an appropriate solution to pursue for many reasons, which I will touch on momentarily. Put on second slide. Oh, perfect. So, what you're looking at is an aerial view of the property in question. On the right side of your screen, at approximately 3 o'clock, is 330 South Ave, which runs along the right side. And you can see in the lower right-hand corner where the Ingress and Egress driveway exists to the current property. There is parking along the front of the building. And then, you'll see two color-coded references within this two-dimensional aerial view. The, the blue is the expansion of the existing facility. So, we are doing additions for classrooms, for a gymnasium, and to accommodate the principal and the related administration for the building. While the remainder of the building, the orange area, is the existing building, which is getting a gut renovation. And so, while the building does exist and there's a tremendous amount of value in an existing asset, it's, it's old, it needs attention, and so, as part of this approach, we are going to completely modernize and update it. That includes everything from a new roof to new windows, obviously, the incorporation of additional classrooms, and everything else, including mechanical systems, are going to be upgraded so that we have a modern building within an existing building's envelope. We are also exploring adding a driveway that you can see at approximately 12 o'clock on the screen out to La Grande to help with the circulation around the property. And just above that driveway, a little bit further north of 12 o'clock, you will see that the existing property does have both a hard and soft play area for the students. There is no athletic field on this site, but there are outdoor play areas for what will, what the intent is to have a kindergarten through 5th grade. Now, from a population perspective, not only will you and have you seen on the website and some of the communications, not only will this provide a school in Fanwood to support the neighborhood school concept that the district is reinforcing, but by creating the area or by creating space in this new building for students, there will be a trickle effect. So that the, there will be some restructuring, so that the kids will be in their neighborhood schools. And by virtue of the restructuring, space will be made available in the other elementary schools. And the 5th grade will then be brought out of the middle school and into the appropriate elementary schools, so that now there is space created in the middle schools. The goal as part of this particular exercise is to remove the trailers but in Scotch Plains Fanwood, also known as the cottage and the villa. Something unique to this community that I've never experienced before, but good for you. So, again, the trickle effect is, for question one in particular, is how can we address the population that is already here and the ever-growing population that is expected?
Do you want to hook up this?
Please.
So, the plan is for the grand school to open at the start of the 2027-28 school year. 5th grade would move to elementary schools, freeing up the space at the middle schools and eliminating the need for the trailers. Students would attend neighborhood schools. We don't know, however, which students would attend each school because it will be based on the population density around each school, which could change before 2027. We also don't know yet which staff will work in the new building. There will be an application process and clear communication to students, parents, and staff during the transition. All elementary schools would provide the same quality learning experiences as they do now. They all would now include dedicated music rooms, art rooms, and innovative spaces that would provide flexible areas for student creativity and building. So, now, to go to question two.
So, as I said, the first category was population. That's focused on the biggest investment in question one. But then, question two and question three are all around a second category of project, which I call infrastructure. So, within the question two category, there are improvements to a variety of the buildings throughout the district. The goal of these projects is to get air conditioning in all the buildings and spaces that are educational in nature that don't currently have them in the schools. So, under the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning category, you can see some of the schools that are up there that will get those kinds of improvements. The second part of the question two is another infrastructure project, and that is electrical system upgrade. So, in some schools, there is a deficit in the electrical capabilities. As you can appreciate, some of these schools were built decades ago, and they were designed electrically with the needs at the time. We have since encountered computers in our daily lives, and the incorporation of air conditioning into any school will increase the electrical load. And so, many of the schools are going to get electrical upgrades. And as part of the electrical upgrade to the building itself, we're also going to incorporate additional panels and try to get additional outlets into the classrooms so that simple computer usage, telephone usage, and things like that have some general convenience outlets for use. And then, lastly, some of the schools are going to get upgraded fire alarms. Now, I say some of the schools because in... Now, I say some of the schools because in cases where schools have fire alarms that are current and working fine, there's no need to replace them. In one case, there was a fire alarm project that we're actually starting now, and that is being funded through capital. But the goal of these projects being presented in a referendum is very critical. And the reason it's critical is because, A, there's an opportunity to get up to thirty-four percent debt service aid from the state. So the projects are being subsidized, where if you're spending capital reserve or capital, you're not getting that subsidy. The second thing is that, while the administration with whom we've had a chance to work are excellent, and Mr. Jones has done a wonderful job over the years managing that capital reserve budget, the realities are that there's only so much money that can be saved within the capital reserve and used. And based on the amount of work that has been identified, that can't really be undertaken by capital reserve alone. So the goal is when these questions pass and the state subsidizes these and the money is paid back over time, then the money that exists through capital can be used for some other projects that maybe didn't make this list. So again, in question-two, these are the three infrastructure projects that have been identified. These are the other schools that are also getting some or all these improvements that are listed, they are on the website. So again, feel free to go online and drill down and take a look at the specific schools with the specific scope of the work. And then because a picture paints a thousand words, or a picture is worth a thousand words, the infrastructure projects in particular are not particularly glamorous projects. And for these projects, we're just trying to show the basic intent that when you have some antiquated systems or underpowered electrical service, getting it upgraded to modern times is critically important. Fire alarms have changed over the years, and so making sure that a building is safe with a fire alarm that works and can be easily managed and monitored. And then heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment, obviously, over the course of time, codes have changed for fresh air intake, cooling loads have changed. So upgrading those things all contribute to an environment that is conducive for educational use. Again, here are some examples of both within a classroom and some rooftop equipment that can be expected as part of the proposal. And then lastly, question-three, which is important, but when compared to the others, was placed in question-three because of the need to prioritize these things, there are roofs that have a certain life expectancy. And the Department of Education does have a list of life expectancies. As my father used to say, nothing lasts forever. No matter how good the district is with their capital reserve, I know that based on my decades of doing this, oftentimes, this is a criticism of districts, which is, you know, why didn't you spend time and money on keeping up the building? Well, the realities are that when people were voting for budgets and they would go down, capital reserves or capital was one of the first things to go. So it's not that they, that these were not maintained. In fact, the district did a very nice job over the years. But again, roofs, like everything else, have a life expectancy, and so roofs throughout the district are going to be replaced. Some have already been replaced, some don't need replacement, but the ballots are going to be replaced that needed, that were identified. And again, here's a perfect opportunity because we are, you know, pretty confident, based on our experience, that the state will come back with what they call their debt service aid or their preliminary eligible cost letter, reflecting a contribution of up to thirty-four percent for these projects. We've done this long enough where we're pretty confident between the roofs and the infrastructure project, that full thirty-four percent, up to thirty-four percent will be contributed. Where on the new construction, it's a little more complicated calculation, we don't think it's going to be fully funded at thirty-four percent, but again, there's money that will, that we expect to be contributing. So again, for the question-three, all the schools are impacted, and roofs are part of that. Turn it back over to Mr. Jones.
Okay. So got a lot of questions on, you know, what yes and no, what happens if a referendum doesn't. So I'm just going to be very simple here and just literally read these, because I think they're worth reading to understand the impact of the vote. State aid cover up thirty-four percent. We keep emphasizing it because, you know, a hundred and sixty million dollars for all these projects, even ten percent, sixteen million dollars that the state would give in. So it's very, very significant amount of money that we're talking about here. Yes, foe's Elementary School, Fanwood, bridging the two communities together and creating neighborhood schools. Small class sizes to maintain the educational standards. Air conditioning, all classrooms, you know, we did have the day off because of the extreme heat in early, early September this year. Dedicated music room, art rooms, innovative spaces at the elementaries. We have at a lot of the elementaries, we've taken out the music rooms, and they don't have dedicated music rooms right now. No more trailers in the middle schools, those are over twenty, twenty years old. And new roofs and electrical upgrades, electric upgrades that are needed in order to have air conditioning even, just to show how the old electrical is that it can't even take new air conditioning. And fire alarms, just to make sure we are up to standard. The no vote, you know, no state aid, so a significant amount of money left on the table, and the projects would have to be prioritized by life safety, of course. Class sizes larger, would, that are already creeping up, would creep up even further. Funds diverted away for academic programs and support services to critical infrastructure needs, potential dedicated funding in the budget to fund some of these projects that we'd have to put in. We mentioned the air conditioning. And no, no more temporary trailers, you know, the county comes and reviews those every single year, and we have to do a walkthrough, and there's improvements in costs, and it makes us worry that the county's going to, you know, putting more pressure on us. Less dedicated spaces, room, you know, we know that we have OTPT in a lot of the hallways of the schools. And the, you know, whenever fire inspectors come and they want to, they want to make sure all the equipment's out of the hallways, we have to be diligent about that. Takes up a lot of time with teachers in their day, in and out of the rooms, no dedicated spaces for OTPT. You'll see that throughout our elementary schools. Delayed replacement of roofs, we can only do so many at one time. We're, we've increased our budget for repairs because we had to. We've had multiple leaks at different schools, and we'll continue to do it if we have to. And then, of course, the aging electrical and fire alarm systems that, that we have, that we have to do with some of the fire alarms, the critical ones we replace, but some of the older ones, some of the parts aren't available, so it's difficult to find them when it needs to be fixed. So just to emphasize again, the state aid, state aid is critical. And just to emphasize what Greg said again, those infrastructure and roof projects, we fully expect to get to thirty-four percent. But something like a building where you're purchasing and expanding and renovating, it gets a little more complicated, and the state asks for a lot more detail, and so it's a little bit harder to estimate how much it's going to go. But no matter what, it will be millions and millions of dollars to cover that expense, for sure. So, you know, with that, I think, looking here, just to make it perfectly clear how the vote was going to work with the tax impact is, we have, so there are waterfall, the votes are a waterfall. So question one, if question one doesn't pass, we cannot do question two or question three. If question one passes, we can then do question two if it passes, and then question three. So if question three passes, but not two or one, we cannot do any of the projects. And this was, the reasoning behind this is because of the survey results we have that were overwhelmingly aligned with smaller class sizes, that the district thought this was, the district and the community thought that this is the way to handle the votes. We won't, we don't know the truth, we know that the budgets are set for these projects. It will not, what's listed on the deck, what's listed on the website, no changes there. What we don't know yet is the amount of state aid, and that will come out, we're hoping, by the end of June, early July. And once those are updated, we will also, we put it on the website immediately. But what we've heard from feedback when we went to different focus groups is that their community wants an estimate, at least now, while schools in, so we can start our outreach. And these numbers here tell you the ranges. Scott's playing for the question one, twenty-eight to thirty-six dollars, depending on the town, per month. Question two, nine to twelve, depending on the town, per month. And question three, thirteen to sixteen. Just to talk about the assessed value. The assessed value is simply a technical tax term. It has nothing to do with market value, it has nothing to do with how much your home is worth. It's, it's really a way that the, and I'm, you know, not a tax assessor, but it's a way they allocate tax dollars throughout the community. And so, you know, you'll see relative to how much a house is worth, you know, a larger house will have a larger assessment than a smaller house. And whether it's, you know, a hundred or two-hundred or three-hundred thousand, it's, it's all relative, and it's just how taxes are applied. So yeah, so we do have a website. On the website, you can see, you can type in your home, your assessed value. Interestingly enough, on the website, it has like Zillow there too, so you can see that it's a, it's a huge difference, you know, in between the market value and the assessment. But you can then compare to this and to understand what your tax impact will be for you personally. And again, I think the total project cost cannot exceed a hundred and sixty-three million dollars. If, if cost, all these projects, we go out to bid, if they go, come in lower, we will not spend the money, and it goes back to tax payers. Additionally, if costs come in higher than a hundred and sixty-three million, then we will have to adapt our project scope. And that's why Greg talked to the contingency funds that we have within these projects. Back to Dr. Mast to wrap it up.
So if everyone could take out their calendars and put these key dates in. So August twenty-seventh is the voter registration deadline. September tenth is your vote-by-mail application is due. For September seventeenth, vote-by-mail ballots must be postmarked. And September seventeenth is the in-person voting. Votes patients and times will be updated on spfk12.orgfutur. And so just thank you for attending and listening to this presentation. More opportunities to come, including a virtual future-ready community information session on Thursday, May sixteenth, at seven-thirty. And at this time, Greg is here to answer any questions, should the board have some at this evening?
Well, just saying, in the vision of transparency, we certainly have had our opportunities to ask questions and sort of dive in, so I don't want the public to think we're just silent right now. But I will speak for myself in thanking you. I think you mentioned how far the project went back, and I remember when you said a year ago, it kind of felt like yesterday, but when we were looking at the costs with, using the trailers, or looking at other trailers or additional trailers, and the impact of the costs long-term versus the refund, the support from the state. So it's not that I don't have any questions, I'm sure maybe others do, but I just wanted everyone to know that we've certainly had our chance to dive in with you. But I appreciate the hard work and that you guys have done.
I have a question. The dependency of question one has to pass for question two and so on and so forth. Is that a state rule, or is that the way we decided to do that?
That's the way we decided to do it. And we've, before going out, of course, I mentioned that the survey results, that this question one is most important. But I think additionally, we learned from other districts across the state that have done these types of questions, where they, sometimes they want all the projects, so they'll put it together, but we saw that the cost was significantly high, was high. So we wanted to make sure that people had options to then vote through each one. And now, you could do it individually. Sometimes, though, you, you don't put the focus of where the surveys were. And so we didn't want to just do just the one question. We didn't want to do just one. We wanted to make sure that people had options, that if they wanted to do more, they could. But yeah, there are, you technically could do as many questions as you want, and you could just do, vote on any of the three, technically.
Yeah, but I don't think you answered my question, though, Christopher, I'm sorry. The fact that in order to, for number two to pass, you have to have number one to pass.
Yeah.
So you can't have number two pass and, and just do question two.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yes.
Is that, that's what I'm asking, is that a state rule, or is that the way we decided?
That's the way we decided.
Okay.
Yes.
Is it, and I guess on the voting machine, it's clearly marked that so that people know when they vote?
Yeah, and that, those, once we get the state funding, then we work with our bond attorney on the actual question that will be on the actual ballot, which we have not worked on yet, but it will say that on there. If you look to other districts, I believe Madison just had a vote, they did something very similar, where it was actually on the ballot. So we'll make sure that's perfectly clear. And when we have the ballot question finalized, of course, we'll advertise it here, and we'll go through it in the board meeting and with all the board members as well, to make sure it's perfectly clear.
Okay.
Because yeah, I could see that could be confusing, for sure.
Okay.
Again, it's early. Once we get with our attorneys and make sure it's completely done, all the numbers are done, we have all the information, we'll work on the next phase.
I just want to point out that the entire community was surveyed. When, when was that? Seems, it all seems like it was yesterday. But a while ago, right, to determine, right, and the feedback, what was most important, like you said, smaller class sizes, and these questions were developed around what people felt like was priority in our schools.
Just to emphasize, smaller class sizes means maintaining the class sizes that we have grown accustomed to.
Which are, yes.
Yes. Right now, we have some class sizes that are larger than we have seen in many, many years.
I also just want to ask, just for clarification, for everyone, you don't have to register for that, for the Zoom next Thursday, or do you? You could just attend?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
The link, where, how will the link be distributed?
I saw it. I don't know if it was a PTA email.
I don't know if I could see it.
No.
There'll be additional communication with the link.
Yes, okay.
We also did surveys, of course, with students in different focus groups, and throughout different, it wasn't just, you know, one survey, it was multiple surveys through different groups and stakeholders.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I wanted to thank our architects, because we have been in numerous meetings and committee meetings and, and belabored things and asked lots of questions, and so I appreciate their time. And I, I want to point out that with the two percent cap, I mean, I've always been proud that we have done a lot over the years. I've been on the board since two thousand and seven, and we have tried to take care of things in this community and do a lot of the maintenance and so forth. But, you know, it, it's like maintenance on a home, it catches up with you sometimes because we only had so much money we could put in. The school district was cut a lot, as you all, all remember, when, in two thousand and eight, and in that era. The state has told us we're now fully, well, told all the districts, we're all now fully funded, we will not be getting any extra money from the state in the coming years. And the two percent cap with transportation going up, I don't know, a hundred and fifty percent, I think it went up over the last couple of years. All the other costs that have gone up, it's even hard to keep teachers because of poaching of other districts and the shortage of teachers. So we, we are, you know, we're going to be working hard just to get our budget, our normal budget, not have a lot of extra money for smoke detectors and for all these other things. So I don't know if the community really realizes that, but, you know, the situation's just getting tighter and tighter for all the districts around the state with all the increases, and we've had the two percent cap for a long time. It's very, very difficult. And we're taxpayers too, so we get it, but just want to say.
Just add to your comment, I think also what's really changed since then is inflation. When you look back at the numbers to, you know, to add four classrooms to this space here when kindergarten was expanded, was the same amount of money as it is just to take this and renovate it. So that, those four classrooms were additions to the schools, so you get foundational work, bricks, you know, walls going up, significantly more expensive work is now the same. That was just eight years ago. So the cost, the cost is exactly the same now, to just renovate and, you know, put up some walls, create spaces here. So it's very different cost structure than you had historically.
Sarah, you'll have to come back and see the new building.
I will. I will. I'll post it up to be able to...
Sarah, you're going to college?
I am.
You're going to be eighteen soon.
Yes.
I have a right to vote.
And I'm going to.
And Sarah will be home on September's, well.
And I will, yep.
So you're registering that mail-in ballot?
Yes.
That's right.
I don't know where you're going, but.
Add those to my calendar.
Yeah, you will be in state.
Yeah. So I can come back.
I like, I like this thought process.
All right, great. Thank you again for the presentation. I'm sure we'll be hearing that a couple of more times, which will be great. So we're going to move over to our first public comment. So in accordance with the Scotchman's family public school bylaws 0164, 0165, the meeting will be open for 15 minutes for public comment. Maximum three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, or other board business will be heard first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. Speakers, please state your full name and the town in which you reside. Please note, boards use the public comment period as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or a cross-examination between the public and the individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board meeting will be resolved that evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his or her designated. So I will now open the first public comment section. So if you have a public comment, please step forward to the mic. State your name and the town in which you reside.
Gary Morris, Fanwood, New Jersey. All right, just so you know, I'm into math. My daughter's a math teacher, so some of this is going to be math. When you talk about the bond referendum, I heard 10, 15, 20. What is it? I mean, how long are we going to be paying that additional cost? Is it, is it 10 years? Is it 15 years? That's got to be, in order for you to come up with those numbers, you have to know if it's 20, 15, or 10 right now theoretically. That's first thing. Is there some way to get the itemized, you know, billing for the $81 million? Like what is for what? How much is for the building? How much is for the property? Do we know what Children's Specialized Hospital paid for that property? And again, I'm just doing it on like Zillow stuff. I, we know internet's not accurate. But my understanding was it may have been like $2.5 million for that property. So seeing us investing $81 million into a property that may have been sold for $2.5 million is kind of a scary proposition. That's why I'd like to see what the breakout is of how much of that is improvements? How much of that is actual property cost? Because of course, if the population goes down, at some point, just like it happened in the past, we may have to sell off that property. Do any of the numbers already reflect the state aid? Or is, are all those cost increases in taxes, is that basically not including the state aid? And does the state aid come immediately? Does that get spread out over the length of the referendum? Are there any other alternatives? I know you've explored things. I've looked at, you know, aerial views of the, the schools. And you know, you're like, well, do we need that courtyard there? I mean, is, I talked to my daughter. She's, was in the courtyard once her entire school career. I know other people spend more time in it. I'm just saying, you have these, a big courtyard in the middle of a high school. What if that were made into two floors? And in other words, there's no alternative to, to this. And it almost comes across to some degree, almost like a, a used car deal. Like you gotta do this now or the price goes up. And I always don't like that at the, at the car dealerships. So again, and we have roof, a lot of roof replacements and things like that. Why not raise the roof? Is that, is that how you do it? I don't, I don't know. But why not raise the roof in some places as opposed to going for a brand-new or renovating an old building and making it? And the other thing is class size ratios. How are the class size ratios and things like that from when we sold the building in the first place to how it is now? And how does that compare to neighboring areas? What is our class size ratio now? I've seen anything from 12 to 15 students. I looked at my daughter's school out in California, private school. It's 18 and those people are paying $33,000 a year to go to that school. So maybe there is some movement there where you could go a little bit bigger in the classrooms. I know you did a, a survey, but it's something to look at. Anyway, I'm just, I'm, and I know I'm overtime. Sorry, totally aware. I'm just really concerned for senior citizens, okay? They are on fixed budgets. We all know we're getting killed with inflation right now, okay? We're all having to pinch around and figure out how we're going to do it. Constantly, you're getting, inflation is going higher than the raises. So you're constantly literally getting, you know, a, a pay reduction every year. How do you do that when you're on social security? And is that going to, is this increase in taxes? Have we done a study? How many senior citizens are possibly going to give up their homes to a family that now comes in with more kids and we're going to have to build another school? So at, at some point, I think we, we got to look at the, the full impact of what might go on there. But again, it is very convenient having a school there. But is, is it, is it the best choice at this point? And how do we know that, you know, as far as trends go, that the, the baby boomer thing might be, you know, tailing off in the next five to 10 years?
Thank you, Mr. Morris. So just so we, just so you know, we're going to answer some of this. Greg's going to answer some questions that you had posed. We're not going to get into a back-and-forth debate, but he'll answer as best as he can. I do want to clarify a couple of things. One is First Children doesn't own the building and never has. They're renting the building, so you'll never find them as ownership. So that's probably part of the reason why you never saw that. It's privately owned. And class sizes, I'm not going to comment on. But I know that they're upwards of 20, not in the 12 to 15 range at all. So I don't know if anybody wants to give an average, but.
I think it's like 22, right?
20 plus, correct?
Something around that, we've seen.
So we're not, we're not, we're well, we're well above the 20, not below the 20.
I do think it's important for the public to know that we have explored, like building on.
That's why.
Right, okay, so.
Greg, speak.
I'll talk to the tax real quick, Greg, before you go. So the cost estimates came from a 30-year bond, interest rate of 4.4%. And we did a range of, and so what you see, the range of the tax impacts is we did a range of state aid and from 15 up to about 30% state aid. And it depends on how the state does it. That's why it's, it's hard to say. Depends on how much they, so we, the, those numbers, state aid is built into those numbers. But that's why it is a range because it could be higher, it could be lower.
So the reason, right, so right now, the ranges, the goal was when we get the state aid numbers, those numbers will be more concrete based on the projects.
Yeah.
Right, so right now, what you're presenting is to get as much information out to the public as possible with preliminary. Those are ranges. Those ranges will become more firm once we get information from the state, which we're expecting towards the end of the school year, maybe early your summer. But I'll pass that over to you now to do your thing.
Okay. There was a lot there. I have more and more senior moments as I get older. So I may ask you just to recite a few that I don't remember if I missed something, okay? So as relates to the $80 million, approximately 10, 10 and a half million is going toward the acquisition of the building. There was an appraisal done, so these aren't random numbers. I don't know where your $2 million came, but there was appraisal, a negotiation. So out of that 80 million, 10 million is going towards the purchase. Then you have other subcategories. I'll, I'll keep it kind of high level because again, there's some detail that will ultimately be shared once we get the state aid. But there's probably about $17 million of renovation of a 35,000 square foot building. We're adding 50,000 square feet at approximately another 30 million, 34 million dollars based on what is a high per square foot cost to build in the public sector. You pay prevailing wage. So when we present numbers as relate to new construction in New Jersey and the public sector, people are surprised and rightfully so. But it can't be compared to the homeowner's renovation. But even that has gone up. If you've ever done a renovation recently or even purchased a piece of plywood, what used to cost $12 or $15 now costs 50. So the cost of prevailing wage per square foot has skyrocketed. And so when we talk about 50,000 square feet being added to that building in the form of multi-story classrooms, a gymnasium, and those related spaces, that's out of that 80 million, about 30, 34 million dollars. Then we have contingencies. The Department of Education mandates we carry contingencies. And Christopher alluded to that, that if not, they use it or lose it. If you don't use it, it goes back to the taxpayer. But we know that anytime you renovate a building, you're bound to uncover something, even though we budgeted a gut renovation, right? We're not ripping down all of the walls around the school. So we might encounter some other things that have to be dealt with. So that contingency is in there. Then you have architects, engineers, attorneys, administrative fees, permit fees, all of those things. So that's kind of at a high level, how we get to the $80 million, which I recognize is a big number. But you can see that incrementally, the numbers are not as big as the 80, but they're still big relatively speaking because this is a major investment. We did look at many other options and you said you looked at aerials. So you're familiar with the streams, you're familiar with the parking. And so all of those things go into it. This is one option of many, right? At the end of the day, you could do other things. You mentioned raising the roof. I'm not sure what the.
You did it better than I did.
Thank you so much. I also do the flaws, thanks to my children. You'll have to edit that out later. Thank you.
That's going viral.
So I guess my question is when you say raise the roof, I'm not sure what you intended. If you intended that, well, we can go up and construct square footages, the challenge with going up is that your buildings are already occupied and fully loaded. And to vacate a space, because you can't do construction over children's heads. So while you could technically build up, and it is a, a one solution to the many challenges of population growth, you have to examine and possibly replace the structure. Because the structures are designed with live and dead loads. And it's possible that the existing roof structure is only capable of supporting a certain load. And when you add a second floor, the loads go up. Not to mention the complication that I just mentioned, which is the realities of trying to work over children or what do you do with those children for a year or more while you're constructing? The beauty of this particular opportunity is that the building came up for sale. There's nobody in it when the construction goes on. And so the construction can take place with minimal to no disruption to the educational opportunity. We've been working in schools for 35 years and one of the biggest challenges is always navigating the work while kids are in school. Because the summer window is very small. And while you can do a couple of projects in that five to eight week window, you can't construct multiple classrooms and things like that. Talked about roof. Talked about breaking down the $81 million. If your daughter is getting tuition of $33,000 a year at a California school, God bless her, because California is one of the most expensive places to live. I don't know how, that seems very cheap to me, but that's not the area of expertise that I have. What else? Oh, the courtyard. So depending on the circumstances at any school, courtyards were designed for a few reasons. But there are state mandates. For example, when you have an operable window or a unit ventilators that often draw fresh air from courtyard, there is a 20-foot distance that must be maintained to the next set of walls and windows. So I don't know the size of the courtyard because generally they're challenging. We didn't look at those. But I would guess that A, it's, we've looked at them in other districts. The challenge with building in a courtyard is how do you get material in? Everything has to be craned over the school because you can't walk building supplies through the hallways into the courtyard. You have to maintain those clearances, which are statutory and code requirements. And ultimately, while there is that greenery there, in our experience, it's not particularly conducive to building classrooms because of, you have to now take some of the classrooms offline to get a corridor to access them if there are not enough means of egress in or out. And so you have to build even more classrooms to cover the net loss of the ones that you need access for. What was up? Is there anything else I missed?
There is one thing I want to add.
Please.
The addition, oh, that we were talking about at the school for the gymnasium. I do want to point out, typical elementary school gyms are not that large. This gym is going to be as large, if not as larger than the high school gymnasiums we have, where it's going to help provide a community, another community's area.
So I just want to clarify one point.
Yep.
And you'll clarify if I'm mistaken.
Size, sorry.
Yeah, so.
New size.
The Department of Education created something called the Facility Efficiency Standards, FES, in 2000. The purpose of that was to try to standardize spatial, spaces and their sizes so that there is an even distribution of funding throughout the state. So that if one district wants to build a classroom and another district wants to build a classroom, the funding calculation is on par with each other. So when we talk about a gym, there are high school gyms with bleachers. There are auxiliary gyms, each with a different square footage. And then there is something called a cafeteria, which is a combination of an elementary school cafeteria, a gymnasium, and an auditorium. And those are typically smaller because you don't have the, as grain and neat. What we recommended and what was pursued is that the square footage of the gymnasium at the La Grand School will meet a regulation basketball court so that recreation, the community can use it. We've often experienced where the school followed the FES, which is a state-issued document. But you know, you can't just blindly follow it. You have to think about the ramification. And after building it, they said, what do you mean? We can't even hold a recreation basketball game because the court isn't big enough? And I'm sure you've experienced that as you've been in some of the school. So we recommended, we increased the square footage a little bit, but there are no bleachers in there. So, so one or two rows, right? Not the typical ones you experience for a large fan base. Because again, we're trying to manage investment with the practicality of construction. And in this case, the limitations of the site, which are nice to have because it's less expensive than building from the ground up where you have to bring on utilities to the site and start with stormwater management and parking from scratch. But, so we did increase the square footage of the gym with some minimal bleachers. But I don't want people to, to picture high school gym.
No, of course not. But, but we've been here, the community was saying we don't have enough space.
Correct.
Outside of.
Yeah, and that's exactly the goal. It'll be good for recreational use. It'll be good for not only the school teams, but again, it's, the intent is, since you're investing to make it a little bit bigger, you get a much greater use out of it. Did I address your question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. I have a question. You said that the building.
If we get, yeah.
You can come up for them.
Anyone from the public that has a question, if they can. I'm sorry.
That's the, that's the only possibility. It's a public meeting.
Anybody from the public that wants to make a public comment has to do so at the mic.
Okay, I'll, I'll address it with you at the conclusion of the meeting.
It's fine.
You know, I was in Fanwood. I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm a dinosaur who's been in town all my life. And when La Grand was sold or closed, I believe, I hate to say this, I date myself. It was 40 years ago. And we were, the district not only closed La Grand, they closed Shacklemaxon. They closed Old School One, which is no longer there. And Newer School up on Plainfield Avenue. And quite frankly, the board couldn't give those buildings away. No one wanted them. The Board of Ed used to say, we're in the real estate business trying to do something with all these empty buildings. And we are not the only district going through that at the time. It was, you know, in this whole area because of enrollment. So the price that may have sold, La Grand sold for was probably minimal because no one wanted it, quite frankly. And no one wanted any of those schools. So just a little bit of the history.
Let's hope that.
Thank you.
Good for coming.
Other public comments? Anybody else want to come to the mic for a public comment?
At the very end, do you? Yeah.
I actually didn't bring any preparatory ours because I'll prepare to speak kind of thing. But just seeing the presentation, I just wanted to make two points. I think the clarity the gentleman gave just now, for example, should be essential in the presentations that you make going forward, right? Because I think the public in general is going to want to know a lot of these breakdowns, right? Like the first time that you mentioned, oh, well, $10 million to acquire the property. Like, oh, all right, well, that makes, like, that starts to make sense, right? When I first saw the number around 48 million for roofs, right? I'm like, what do you mean dollars for roofs on eight schools? I'm sure that there's a breakdown that we can provide for folks around that to kind of get the rest of the population of the, of the town to work that out. You know, and in general, you know, as a taxpayer, you're always like, oh, I don't want to pay any more taxes kind of thing as a community member. Hey, the project needs to, needs to go forward and get, and get done. You know, the, the structure of the question that I think you had mentioned before around like, hey, one has to pass for two to pass, for three to pass, feels wishy-washy? And I think that there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be like, oh, well, why do we have to do that? You know, like other referendums from the past year or two, people like, why can't we just vote on this one? Because we want this, but we don't want that kind of thing. So we just need to make that clear for the overall populist kind of thing of like, hey, you know. hey, you know, you can't have it sliced up. It's got to be all in one, kind of thing. So those are just some of the-
Thank you.
Helpful. Thank you very much. Other public comments?
I just want to add to the, the enrollment. So when this building's, so you're talking, the three buildings were when they, they had them, because it was a baby boom. And, you know, obviously, there was a, a lot of students in enrollment, and then it sort of dropped off. When they sold those schools in the 80s, we have the historical enrollment. We're actually above those numbers now. So it sort of makes sense that we're needed to get, need more space.
And let me just comment that it's not, it's not like you have to, everything has to pass. Not all three questions have to pass for, to get anything. Question one has to pass before you can get anything for question two or three. Right? I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah, and I think, I appreciate the, the feedback, I think, the details. And, you know, I know that architects have been through this a few times. And I'm assuming that the presentation that we're going to be seeing with the public is going to include some of those details, so it's helpful.
And I think the thing about the questions is, there's no way that we can come up with space if we don't get question one. We can continue to patch roofs when they leak, you know, on the budget and so forth. So if two and three don't pass, we'll just limp along and do the best we can. And, and we won't have air conditioning in the buildings, and the electrical systems will look like you saw and so forth. But one is really crucial to not having classes that are, you know, 30-plus.
I appreciate-
Big classes.
Sorry, Nancy. I appreciate the feedback-
Yes.
That you gave as well, for what you feel like would be helpful for the public. Because I've heard other people ask, well, why can't you just build annexes? Like we did for the kindergarten classrooms. Why can't you just, like Mr. Murray said, build, build up? So I think the way that you explained it was very helpful. And so I think other people would benefit from hearing that.
Any other public comments before the next public comment, which we will be coming up on the end, towards the end of the meeting?
And I'll just encourage the public to keep sending emails to, to future@spfk12.org, because we are answering every single one of those emails that come in. And then they add to our frequently asked questions, they add to our messaging, they help us get the information out. Like, tonight was great, because we can now, now we'll adjust our presentation, we'll adjust the website to all this feedback. So keep the questions coming.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. I did. We have, I know we have curriculum, I know we have-
Community relations.
I'm ready. I can go. Okay. Okay, the curriculum committee did meet last week. One of the best parts, I think, Sinalia is saying this, of being on the curriculum committee is when students come to present to us, and we see some of the really innovative projects that our students are involved in. So we had that opportunity last week. We heard from the Beam Line for Schools team, BL4S team. And I'll explain what that is. It's a group of nine students. And this initiative was actually sought out by one of our students at the high school who saw, who saw an advertisement to enter a physics competition that is organized by CERN, a European Laboratory for Particle Physics. So went to the guidance counselor, said, I'm interested in doing this project. The counselor sought out a teacher who would support it. So Mr. Quackenbush is physics teacher at the high school, took up this challenge, and worked with the nine students to come up with a very impressive, we received a copy of the, the proposal, the- But the proposal was entered, and if it's selected, the students will, if their experiment is selected, then the team will be able to go to Geneva, Switzerland, and present, present there, I believe. So the proposal is titled, Changing Isotopes Through Proton-Antiproton Annihilation. And they gave a very impressive presentation to us about the progression of this project, and how hard that they all worked on it late nights. So they will learn in June if they, they won, if they're one of the three presentations that was selective, and whether they'll get to go to Geneva this summer. And if they do win, I hope they get to come back and present to us in the fall, so we can hear about that experience. But why I think this was an incredible presentation is that, number one, a student initiated this, and, which is incredible. And secondly, we really, this is yet another example of how our staff really supports the strengths and passions of our students. And just, you know, it was something above and beyond. Didn't have to convene the team and spend all these extra hours working on it. But Mr. Quackenbush, you know, did that, so want to thank him for that. Okay, so that was one agenda item. Second one was, we heard an update from Dr. Biz McKenna just on summer reading assignments, and how the summer reading assignments were selected, what they, how they're used to learn about students. So we saw that whole list. The third agenda item was an update on the SPF Boost, the High Impact Tutoring Grant, which we've been talking about over the last many months. Dr. McGary discussed that the tutoring program is concluding. 190 elementary students were able to benefit from the nine weeks of tutoring. And their MAP scores will be assessed to identify the impact of the tutoring, and parents will receive a survey. But we had some informal and anecdotal feedback already that it was very helpful for the students. And the fourth agenda item was an AP African-American Studies grant update that SPF received one of the 25 grants to establish the AP African-American Studies Program. And we can use the grant funds to look at K-8 programs, and how the students are exposed to African-American history. We can use it to purchase resources and professional development for our staff.
Any questions on curriculum? Okay. Ms. Williams, you want to do wellness?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. So the Wellness and Equity, actually, known as WE, committee met last week. And we had Kalen France, who is a student assistant specialist, who joined us and talked about the exciting things that they were doing in the school district. Workout Wednesdays, which is a whole-school wellness program, and engaging the students with the staff, and, and connecting with them, and looking to expand this to other schools in the district, because the students are really loving it. And I just want to also highlight that May is Mental Health Month, and there's a cer, a direct correlation to mental health and exercise and connecting. So looking forward to the other stuff that they will be sharing with us. Our next meeting will be in September. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions?
I have the student activities and athletics. And we discussed a few things. I learned a lot more about AI cameras and what we use them for in our sports teams. But we do use AI cameras and streaming for our sports on multi-levels. A, for people to watch the games on, but also players use them actually on, like, for getting into college, and for looking at film. And I'm sure you guys can school me on this. But apparently, so just, so, you know, everyone, about four or five years ago, we started working with an organization, a company called Huddle. And at the time, it was about $4,500. And we approached them about, we have a few new cameras to be fixed and about going forward. And we received a $16,000 quote to renew them. So that was rather high. And so Dr. Miller did some research. There's NVS VidSpot, which is much lower. So they will not only provide us with the three new cameras, but a portable camera, and new endzone cameras, and they can do it for about $8,000 per year. Over 130 districts in New Jersey use them. The difference, it would require a monthly streaming fee per individual of $12. So we just asked Dr. Miller to go back. He's going to do some revisiting once he shares some more information on the percentage of community members who are live streaming. But stay tuned for that one. We highlighted, Dr. Heisey, I'm going to go through in addition to what our student representative said, but a few of the highlights that he gave us. Model UN was doing extremely well this year. We talked about Club Inc. was, has been recognized by Scotts Plains Township as one of our largest clubs. FBLA has a summer program this year. SMAC this year, who usually does a relay for life. This year, they're doing a flag football fundraiser, so that's kind of exciting. We had a Union Latina, which was represented by many of our Hispanic students who went to Raridan Valley, exploring transition from high school to college for Hispanic students. But we, we talked about esports extensively, on how tremendous it is, and, and really on how many different leagues they're participating in, and how our supervisor has gone above and beyond. And then the final agenda item we had was the field and building dedication policy, which we will be as well revisiting as for, just relates to the naming of, and honoring of people. So we're reviewing that. And I actually had one other thing, which is that Thursday night is our 2024 Hall of Fame, Hall of Fame induction. I believe it's 13 people, and the last induction, I don't know why, alumni induction? Was in 2018. And I've clearly spoken enough.
I do have updates. Ryan was able to get those viewership numbers for us for tonight. So the, the highest we had was the Westfield football game, which was 60 views. Then the second was Cranford game, which was 27. Then South Plainfield was 13, and JFK was 11. The average length of time watching the stream was 20 minutes. The average length of the games, two and a half hours. And also for basketball, the highest for the Cranford County game, which was 31. Number two was the Del Barton Boys Lacrosse game, which was 19. And then it goes down to, you know, that's the second highest, was the 19. And then goes down to 13 for one, for one of the games. Average length of time for those games, and this includes basketball lacrosse, was 10 minutes. And the average game length, the basketball game, is 1.5 hours.
No, I really appreciate, thank you very much for getting that to us. And, and obviously, us understanding that there's other factors that we have to look at, which we discussed, but, you know, is it one, you know, how many families are really, you know, is it, you know, grandparents from the same family? But that is all very important information, and certainly will lead to us making our decision.
Any other committee reports, community relations, no?
No, we have a meeting this week.
Any others? No? Okay. Superintendent, curriculum.
So number one, out-of-district placements. And two, move that the board approves the 12 hip cases discussed in the April 25th meeting, where five of those cases were found to be hip.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just real quick, I, we didn't go enrollment report, because Mr. Jones gave an update on the enrollment earlier in the meeting. So I just skipped over that item, apologies. Personnel.
Move that the Board of Education approves the, my, my recommendations for personnel on the report that we discussed this evening in exec.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none? Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Barve?
Yes.
Ms. Bauer?
Yes.
Mrs. Boroff?
Yes.
Ms. Brody?
Yes.
Ms. Suriani?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Winkler?
Yes.
Dr. Kolkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes. Motion carries. Pass over to the business functions, Mr. Jones.
The related services, I just want to point out, the out-of-district and the related services are 24-25. The next meeting, June 23rd, maybe most of our June, our 24-25. But because the, these services, a lot of them start over the summer. That's why we have them in this meeting. Athletic bid awards, just want to talk about some, so we, I got to prove the vendors and the amounts. But some of the things we purchased for this were, you know, t-shirts, pom-poms for cheerleaders, a new mat, socks, armbands for boys soccer, tennis balls, some, you know, some practice uniforms, boys tennis, schoolbook, score, scorebook that they have to use every year. Football, so you know, mouthpieces, knee pads, some shorts, things like that. Girls soccer, you know, socks, a trainer board, goal shot practice, volleyball, targets, ball carts, things of that nature.
Softballs?
Yep, softball. Softball, we have, yep, softballs. Lineup cards, protective screen, ball caddy, track, starting block, those types of things. These are the types of items that we, that are, that are purchased through this bid. Next item, so employee health insurance. You know, unfortunately, you know, 13.2% rate increase. And for Delta Dental, we're switching our dental, our dental, back to Delta Dental, 11.9%. So extremely challenging to cover these costs. And we, you know, their initial bid, their initial numbers came in, you know, 16, 16 and a half percent. So we got them down to 13. But the amount of use we've had in the plan has, has been elevated now for two years. And some, we were denied from different groups that we can join. There's these funds where you can join to try to lower your costs. We, because of our experience, we were denied to join those groups. In addition, we had multiple companies not bid, because our experience was high. And so we're sort of stuck with this, these high rates here. So we are looking at different items for next year to try to address this. And we're looking at, looking at that now. But yeah, so these are very high increases. Four is our cost for here, for the, to convert this into classrooms. And so is the next one, number five. So I just want to point out, so in preparing for this space, we had, we did testing. So we did a water test. And we knew we had some water intrusion in some of the rooms. And we did additional testing to see how it was. And so now the project here is, the scope has gotten, has gotten larger. And so the PSA is going to be a two-year project. First year this summer, this summer, we'll try to put, I would call it, you know, to make sure to lessen the amount of water intrusion on the walls. And then next, next summer, which will start immediately after we finish this project, we'll go into a second phase, which will be to actually, if you, if you look at the outside there of the school here, there are, the walls aren't there. There's basically, right here, yeah, so right here. You see, these aren't really walls. They're, I don't even want to call them-
Window panels.
Window panels, yeah. So, yeah, so this, yeah. And so there's a lot of, we're going to, of course, put as much on the outside to stop water from coming in as possible. But really, what we have to do is take those out, and we have to build walls to stop the intrusion of water. So, yeah, so when it comes, that's why the additional cost for the architects to plan that and, and get ready. And we're going to bid that most likely, or at least assign the project in hopefully, early fall, so that we can get on the count and get better pricing, and get on the calendar of contractors right away, so we can start as soon as school's out. Okay. High school concrete steps, we've talked about this previously, it's just the word, the contractor. This is at the high school, the back steps that are there. We have a donation of a car for the auto shop. Library book disposal. So 313 South Ave, we are going to expand our footprint in that space to create space at the high school. And we'll be bringing over additional administrators, up to 10 additional employees to that space, to create more flexibility at the high school. Number 10 is fire drills. Number 11 is staff training.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a question, Mr. Jones. So just on the insurance stuff, that, are ratables are based on number of open, number of claims? Is that, is that how that works?
Yes, number of claims, yes.
So is the number of claims from the prior years, how the insurance companies base their rate for us going forward?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes, move that the Board of Education approves the April 25th board minutes. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Comments or questions or abstentions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New board business. Other board business liaison reports.
I have a brief one from CPAG. I was unable to make last night's meeting, or Monday night's meeting, which was last night, but they approved their executive board, so I'm sure that they will be updating their website shortly. The next meeting is June third, and they're online and their website is filled with extremely useful information.
Thank you, Barve. Other reports?
I, Garden State Coalition of Schools hasn't met since our last meeting, but we have a good number of people who are going in two weeks to the annual meeting, so that's exciting. And the new assistant commissioner is the featured speaker, so acting interim.
Any other liaison reports, any Union County reports or nothing? No? Okay. Workshop, workshop reports, request to attend workshops? None? Okay. We'll move on to board motion resolutions. Ms. Brody?
It's my pleasure to move that the Board of Education adopts the following resolved Community Counseling Center, Inc. resolution. Whereas, Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc. has been a valuable resource in our school since nineteen seventy-four, and whereas, Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc. is dedicated to providing quality and affordable counseling, advocacy, and educational programs for children, adolescents, and adults, as well as to individuals, couples, and families. And whereas, Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc.'s highly accredited staff of psychologists, licensed professional counselors, marriage and family therapists, and social workers helping students, families, and staff with a wide range of concerns. And whereas, Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc. collaborates with Union County public and non-public schools. And whereas, Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc. offers confidential in-person counseling as well as teletherapy. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value of Resolve Community Counseling Center, Inc. celebrating fifty years as a driving and dynamic force serving the mental health needs of our students, families, and staff. Now, therefore, during this Mental Health Awareness Month, the Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education congratulates and commends the Resolve Community Counseling Center.
Second.
We would like to invite Gail to come up and Deb Brody and Evan to hit the floor. And Lisa, if you could snap a picture, that would be really good.
Leftover flowers?
Nope.
Ouch. So much.
Leftover flowers, that's cute.
Okay. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
If Thomas Brody made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. That was the resolution. Second public comment. So, in accordance with Scotch Plains Fanwood Public Bylaw zero-one-six-four, zero-one-six-five, the meeting has been opened for fifteen minutes for public comment. Maximum three minutes per speaker. Speakers addressing superintendent items, business functions, and other board business will be here first. If time remains, speakers may address other matters. Speakers, please state your full name and the town in which you reside. Boards use public comment period as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into question and answer or cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved that evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issues to the superintendent or his or her designee. I will now open up the second and final public comment section for fifteen minutes. Please come to the mic, state your name and the town in which you reside.
Gary Morris, Fanwood, New Jersey. Out of curiosity, does that, do the esports get included in the streaming thing? I don't know if that was, like, the sports streaming.
No, no, totally, so the, the streaming is for the public, for the sports games?
Athletics.
For athletics.
Hey, don't, don't not call those people athletes, I'll tell you.
No, but they.
We saw them.
No. I'll remind the board to wait until public comment is finished to respond.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just curious. And just, just to put it in perspective, you know, it was great last week seeing, like, the parents and everything supporting these kids doing that. My son actually has a friend who literally makes fifteen million dollars a year playing games. Fifteen million dollars a year. Trying to talk my son into doing that too, but no, not going to happen. Anyway, so for any parent out there that thinks this is a waste of time, it can actually be an interesting career. I also wanted to say something, I guess, I don't know if you heard that Sal did not win the thing, but I thought it would be a really cool thing if we brought him in to one of these meetings and honored him, maybe get him some gift cards to local places or something like that. I think would be really, really cool. And I just wanted to share a personal story. I was really vested in this because it brought me right back to when one of my sons was going to McGinn, there was a, there was a custodian there named Ekram, I don't know if anybody remembers him, very special man. And, and you will relate to this because you're all about the drop-offs, right? You know the pressure of the drop-off, right? You're, you're in the line and you're like, get out of the car, just get out of the car, hurry up, there's somebody behind me. And my son would not, very often would not get, he was just, he was attached to, you know, his mom and not wanting to get out of the car, and Ekram, day in, day out, would come over to that car and open the door and make my, my son feel at home going to school. And it's that kind of a thing, that was not his job, right? But he made, he made that effort, and those, those are the people that are special, and I just got the sense that this guy, Sal, I don't even know him, but I just got that vibe that this is that kind of a guy, and I really think we should do something to honor him, and I think that would be awesome. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close this portion. Upcoming scheduled meetings, so we have Tuesday, May twenty-first, staff and student recognition in the Evergreen New Gym, and then, we have our final board meeting of the school year on June twentieth, same time. Not sure location as of yet. And, go of the order.
I have something. So, being, seeing as we've officially can say we were moved into 313, some of us, we've started getting the ball moving?
We're still unpacking.
Okay. But, 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 I don't know if anybody's driven by, but Scotch Plains Fanwood Board of Education building is officially mentioned on 313 South Avenue, so Amy and I thought it would be appropriate to bestow upon you, representing Fanwood.
Wow. Thank you.
From the Amys.
From Fanwood.
From Fanwood.
Welcome to the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Oh seven, oh two-three.
I figured you could look up and you don't have to remember it all the time if you see it.
And it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so I wanted to say, we appreciate you, teachers.
Yeah, like Stephanie said in the curriculum meetings, I think every time we meet for the curriculum committee, not only our students, but our staff, they, they go above and beyond to make it special for our kids. So, you know, thank you for all that you guys do, and I know that it's a lot of hard work, so we appreciate it. It's so nice, all the schools have, like, the letters out, like, the big words, like, Kohl's theme is "You Rock," so it's nice to see that.
Not like Burger King's "You Rule," Kohl's is "You Rock."
Yep.
Got it.
That's the theme. Monday, they were supposed to dress up as rock stars.
Oh, really? Very cool.
We know Burger King slogan.
The commercial's on in between the sporting event. It's on every commercial in between every sporting event. You don't watch sports?
Watch commercials.
I made it to the art festival last week, and it was fabulous, as always, the hard work that all the teachers to collect the pieces, bring them, set them up, hang them up, and the creations were just beautiful. So, I always enjoy looking around at the art festival.
And it was packed.
Yes, yes. Okay. Since we're not meeting again until June twentieth, I just want to wish all the graduating seniors the, the best. Congratulations to them and their families, and enjoy the prom, be safe. And, and thanks again to Syra for her service to us and being the first junior rep, and congratulations to you.
I have two things. One, just a clarifying point, though we are here at oh seven, oh two-three physically, we have maintained our mailing address.
So, still officially Scotch Plains.
Just our mailing address, yes. And secondly, we have been very focused on the different heritage months throughout the year. This is Mental Health Awareness Month in May, is also Jewish Awareness Month, as well as South Islander Asian Awareness Month?
And Haitian.
And Haitian.
And Haitian, okay. And Dr. McGary, if you could just speak to how we're gathering information?
Sure, like we do with many of our heritage months, we have a padlet that was created for teachers to share resources, to provide artifacts of the work they're doing already. There's a really wonderful preschool PowerPoint that has been shared, focused on both of the months, Asian American and Jewish American History Month, and, and some really interesting connections between the two as well, so.
Thank you for letting us know that, because, you know, not being in tune all the time and daily, I think I just learned, I think we reached out, and to know that the different resources that are provided, because we very briefly touch on these heritage months or we, you know, might do a resolution, but for the public's sake, I think it's really important that, that we share the vast amounts of tools, and then, I'm sure there's a debriefing afterwards where we discuss what was successful and how to pilot things throughout the year and the district and then roll it out lengthwise. So, thank you for letting us know.
Any other?
Just to be consistent, it's crazy out there at drop-off, so just be careful out there.
And to add to that, if your son or daughter are riding their bike? Yes. They need to wear their helmet.
Not ride on the back of each other, because I saw that today.
Oh, dear. Yes, one, one student to a bike. All students need to wear helmets. I've noticed a lot of helmetless children on my drive on the way to Terrell. It's concerning. The nickname for helmets.
The Highlander is usually a bike mess.
And a lot of them not wearing helmets, it's very concerning, but my son won't let me roll down the window and say anything.
I have to drop your son and go back.
And remind our students that the nickname for helmets is brain buckets. They really want to protect their brains, yes. Brain buckets, yes.
Any other, go of the order? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a great night.